Good evening, I call the October 19th, 2016 meeting of the Planning Board of Smithtown to Water. Before we proceed with this evening's agenda, I ask that you all please rise and join us and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The Chair recognizes the Planning Department for reading of items recommended for adjournment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend adjournment for the following items because they are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number 1, 2012-04 Storybook Homes, Nescotset. Number 2, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park. Number 3, 2015-05 Thomas Giswali, Kings Park. Number 4, 2010-06 KVC Holdings. Under preliminary subdivision, number 5, 1170 Map of Coffee Estates, Nescotset. Under waiver requests, 6, number 773 Scholar Estates, Comac. Number 7, 1135 Tuamme Platt, St. James. Number 8, 911A Glen Hole Northern, St. James. Under final subdivisions, number 9, 1156 Map of Open Meadow, Fort Solanga. And under amendment of conditional approval, number 10, 280A application, second map of San Remo.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on the items read for adjournment? There being none, is there a motion to adjourn these items?
Motion to adjourn items 1 through 10 as read.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Items stand adjourned. Under new hearings and decisions, we have a final subdivision, map of Bridal Court, Fort Solanga.
The applicant is requesting final approval to subdivide 3.17 acres into three single-family lots. The Planning Board granted the subdivision conditional preliminary approval on November 7th, 2012. The applicant has complied with the conditions of preliminary approval. The map of Bridal Court is comprised of one tax lot that is rectangular in shape. The property is split-zoned R43, single-family residential, 43,560 square feet minimum; and R21, single-family residential, 21,780 square feet minimum. Lot number 1 is in the R21 zoning district, and lots 2 and 3 are in the R43 zoning district. To the north, east, and south of the subject sites are properties zoned R43, and to the west is R21 zoning. There are two dwellings on the property, as well as two detached garages and a barn. The two dwellings will be on lots 2 and 3 of the subdivision and will have access via the proposed private road. The applicant proposes to construct a new single-family dwelling on Lot 1, which will have frontage on Woodfield Avenue and the proposed private road. The topography of the site slopes gently up at about 6 percent from the street to the middle of the property where it levels off. The parcel does not contain any high groundwater, wetlands, or other environmentally sensitive features. The proposal involves minor regrading on Lot 1 and no regrading on lots 2 and 3. On January 28th, 1992, the Board of Zoning Appeals granted the following approvals for structures on the subject property, case number 10629. A, certificate of existing use to permit two dwellings on a lot. B, variance to increase maximum floor area of a private garage from 750 square feet to 1,521 square feet. C, reduce side yard from 24 feet to 4 feet for a proposed detached garage addition located on Lot 3. D, reduce side yard from 24 feet to 7 feet for a proposed 650-square-foot two-story dwelling located on Lot 2. Variance D will no longer be valid once the subdivision is approved because the proposed subdivision changes the yard from a side yard to a rear yard. Therefore, in order to maintain the existing dwelling on Lot 2, it will be necessary for the Planning Board to reduce the rear yard setback from 100 feet to 6 feet. It appears that variance C, to reduce the side yard setback for the detached garage addition, the garage barn, reflects a typographic error. Based on the current and past surveys, it appears that the garage and barn on Lot 3 is and always was 2.6 feet from the side property line, not 4 feet as the approval letter states. In addition to the variances for the existing structures, the applicant is requesting to reduce the minimum lot area on Lot 2 from 43,560 square feet to 37,694 square feet, and to reduce the total side yard on Lot 3 from 60 feet to 38 feet. In accordance with Section 322-30.4 of the zoning ordinance, the Planning Board has the authority to grant the above-mentioned variances because, 1, the change does not alter the density required by the zoning district; 2, the change complies with Section 322-19 environmentally sensitive lands; 3, the change would result in the addition of not more than one lot to the proposed subdivision provided it does not alter the density of the zoning district; 4, the change would not alter the character of the neighborhood. The engineering and highway departments have reviewed the final subdivision application and find it acceptable. The traffic safety department has no comment. Pursuant to Section A14-24, Article 14 of the Suffolk County Administrative Code, this subdivision was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. They respond as saying that this application is considered to be a matter of local determination. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. The Planning Department has reviewed the final subdivision application and offers the following comments. 1, the proposed cul-de-sac does not appear wide enough to accommodate emergency response vehicles, delivery trucks, and other large vehicles. However, the manageable curbs allow for vehicles to use the grass as extra space if needed. 2, at the time of preliminary map approval, the applicant indicated that access to Fort Solanga Road would no longer be necessary. Therefore, and in order to avoid confusion and possible complications in the future, the 25-foot right-of-way shown on the map of Halliwell Platt should be abandoned, and the asphalt driveway on Lot 3 should be terminated a minimum of 1 foot west of the rear property line. 3, the Planning Department recommends approving the requested variances. In applying the five area variance consideration, the Department finds that the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the public for the following reasons. A, the requested variances will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create detriment to nearby properties. The building's legally existed for over 25 years, and the requested side yard and rear yard variances would not create any additional impact on the adjoining properties. Additionally, the requested lot area variance will not negatively impact the neighborhood or adjoining properties because the average lot areas in this subdivision exceed the minimum lot area required in the R21 and R43 zones. B, the benefit to the applicant cannot be achieved by any other method unless he demolished or removed the dwelling on Lot 2 and garage barn on Lot 3. With respect to the lot area, the applicant could move the proposed lot line between lots 2 and 3, however, this would not change the impact of the subdivision on adjoining properties. C, the requested variances are substantial, however, the setbacks are only small in the areas adjacent to the existing buildings. Lot area of Lot 2 is 13 percent smaller than required, but combined lot area of all three lots is 8 percent larger than required by the zoning ordinance. And D, the proposed variances will not have adverse effects on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The property is not environmentally sensitive. Additionally, the structures already exist, so there will be no regrading or clearing related to the variances. 4, the rear yard setback for Lot number 2 should be modified so that it is 100 feet from the north property line in all places except adjacent to the existing dwelling, in which case the setback line shall be the exterior wall of the dwelling. The Planning Department is not in favor of the 75-foot setback proposed on the map because there is adequate room to extend the setback to 100 feet. 5, the Planning Department prepared a planting plan for the proposed subdivision that marks the location of existing trees, existing street trees and new street trees. The plan depicts 25 street trees, including 16 to be preserved, therefore, the applicant will need to plant and should be bonded for nine trees. 6, with respect to sidewalks, Woodfield Avenue and Leslie Court are residential access streets with low traffic volume. There are no sidewalks in Woodfield Avenue, and it appears that constructing sidewalks within the subdivision would not benefit the community. Therefore, the Planning Department recommends that the Board waive the requirements of sidewalks on these streets. 7, Section 248-24 of the subdivision regulations states that each subdivision is required to show park area of at least 2 acres per 100 buildings. However, the Court of Appeals has ruled that the town cannot require the reservation of park area unless the Planning Board determines on a case-by-case basis that a need for parkland exists with respect to the individual subdivision. Based on the community facility study in the Town Comprehensive Plan, there is a need for parkland in the neighborhood in which the subdivision is situated. This subdivision shares of meeting need is approximately 0.018 acres. In cases where the Planning Board determines that a suitable park cannot be located or is otherwise not practical, the subdivision is required to pay cash equivalent prior to the filing of the map. Given the location and small size of the subdivision, a dedication for park space would not be practical. Therefore, the payment of an equivalent park fee established at $10,800 is recommended as a condition of final plat approval. 8, the final map shall show the name of the private road as Leslie Court. Further, number 1, letters assuring availability of utility service have been received from the Suffolk County Water Authority and PSENG. 2, Smithtown Central School District, number 1, has acknowledged a subdivision. 3, the amount of the inspection fee is estimated at $2,850. 4, the amount of park fees estimated at $10,800. 5, the amount of the performance bond is estimated at $35,617.50. 6, the amount of cash deposit estimated at $1,500. 7, the amount of the performance bond we posted is $34,117.50. The Planning Department recommends approval and offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. B, resolved at the final plat of number 1147 Map of Bridal Court is hereby approved subject to the following conditions. A, the applicant shall post a performance bond in a form and amount specified by separate resolution of the Planning Board and for a term of 2 years. B, the applicant shall post a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond and in accordance with the provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown subdivision regulations. C, the applicant shall pay the inspection fee and cash deposit as established by separate resolution of the Planning Board. D, the applicant shall pay a park fee of $10,800. E, the applicant shall obtain final approval of the drainage and regrading plans to the satisfaction of the town engineer. F, the final plat shall include all information required by Section 248-15 and 248-16 of the Town Subdivision Regulations, the conditions of approval, and the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. A check print of the final plat shall be submitted to the Planning Department for review before the milers are prepared. G, a total of 9 street trees shall be planted approximately 35 feet on center. These trees shall be 3 inches to 3 and 1/2 inches in caliber, Northern Red Oak, American Sweet Gum, Sassafras, Toob Tree, White Oak, or approved Deecles. Existing healthy trees may be substituted if they are protected from construction damage and are acceptable to the Planning Department. H, all necessary dedication papers shall be submitted by the developer to the Planning Department in complete and accurate form as one package, including but not limited to the performance bond, liability insurance policy, title report, and all required fees. At least 90 days prior to the expiration date of conditional approval, incomplete submissions will not be accepted. If the applicant is unable to comply with the above requirement prior to the 90-day deadline, an extension of the Planning Board's approval is necessary. I, a complete set of erosion and control plans will be submitted for approval by the Engineering Department as deemed necessary by the Engineering Department. J, the rear yard setback for Lot number 2 should be modified so that it is 100 feet from the north property line in all places except adjacent to the existing dwelling, in which case the setback line shall be the exterior wall of the dwelling. K, prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing or other site preparation work, the applicant shall abide by the following conditions. 1, all limits of clearing and any conditioned trees to be preserved within clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk of any tree to be reserved than a drip line of said tree. This area to be preserved shall be indicated in the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Michael Hillbrand, Licensed Land Surveyor, and dated June 18th, 2012. 2, upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of the limits as clearing as marked in the field by sighted fencing. 3, the applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work until the Environmental Protection Director approves the marked limits of clearing in writing. 4, the snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. L, the proposal shall substantially comply with the planting plan dated September 6th, 2016, prepared by the Smithtown Planning Department. M, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the new dwelling until the water line has been disconnected and the septic system has been officially abandoned at the garage building existing on Lot 3. N, the final map shall show the name of the private road, Leslie Court. O, in order to avoid confusion and possible complications in the future, the 25-foot right-of-way shown on the map of Halliwell Platt shall be abandoned, and the asphalt driveway on Lot 3 shall be terminated a minimum of 1 foot west of the rear property line. And be further resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the Town Board has posted a performance bond of a satisfactory form and amount. And be further resolved that the conditional approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution and within 62 days after the Chairman of the Planning Board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the owner in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Be resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby modifies the building zone ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as number 1147 Map of Bridal Court as follows. Table of modification is shown below. This table shall be shown on the final map to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. A fee of $1,500 is required for these variances. Be resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board be authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for number 1147 Map of Bridal Court in the amount of $35,670.50, and establishing an inspection fee of $2,850, and a cash deposit of $1,500. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $34,117.50.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent the applicant. I've submitted the affidavit of posting to David Flynn. A lot of work for a 3-lot subdivision. I know the Planning Board, Planning Department really worked hard on this application because of some of the uniqueness of the parcel. There's 2 things that we take issue with and ask the Board to consider the following. On Lot 2, the suggestion of the Planning Department was a 100-foot rear yard setback. Now, ultimately, what would happen here is this existing, very old, 2-story frame dwelling would be demolished, and the purchaser would build a new house. If we were to have, if the Board required us to maintain 100-foot rear yard and a 60-foot front yard, there would leave, I think Matt figured it out, very little room to build a house, probably 10 or 15 feet. So, and the idea was, and David explained to me that if you pushed the new house off to the side, well, it wouldn't have that effect. But we really don't want to do that. We'd like it ultimately to be a normal-type subdivision with a rear yard and a front yard setback. So, we asked the Board to allow us to maintain a 75-foot rear yard. In doing so, and maintaining the 60-foot front yard, we'd end up building about a 38-foot-wide house, which isn't the widest house in the world, but it's passable and it makes sense in this area. So, I guess if you have some kind of concern about that rear yard being 75, you could make the front yard 50 instead of 60, and then we could catch it on the back end. But I think making it 75 and leaving the 60 alone will allow us ultimately, or the ultimate buyer, to have a decent size and width house. And it would conform with the proposed house on Lot 1 and ultimately be a better layout. The next thing that concerns us, and actually is something that we only have half-control over, is the recommendation by the Planning Department to eliminate that right-of-way. Well, number 1, the right-of-way has been there much longer than 10 years, and it's been used by the party to the right of that parcel. And also, it's something that my clients, the Woodworths, would like to maintain as being a good neighbor to the people who live immediately to the right. You can see on the map, and it's interesting, that the map, they show this right-of-way driveway to Fort Solanga Road, 25A, and it's shown on the map of Halliwell Platt. So, it's there. And in any event, the, both of the parties, Mr. and Mrs. Woodworth, and the owner Cindy Lee of the other parcel, have agreed that they would maintain the right-of-way on the driveway between the 2 parcels, and when either party sells their respective home, either party may terminate the agreement. So, it doesn't hurt anybody. It's a good idea. It makes for good neighbors, and they've been doing it for years, years, and years. And either party can terminate it when they sell the home. So, we asked the Board not to require us to remove that driveway, and I haven't checked into it, but there's a strong possibility we couldn't anyway, because they would have easement rights by what's commonly called adverse possession. But in any event, the parties have agreed to terminate it when either party sells. So, I'm going to hand this up to the Board and ask the Board to consider that and not take away that driveway as proposed by the Planning Department.
Record, let the record state that I have my possession handed to me by council agreement between Cindy Lee and Donald and Leslie Woodworth, signed by Mr. Woodworth and Cindy Lee, dated October 18th, 2016. Now, this thing, it's only, can be revoked upon the sale of one of the homes? It cannot be done like?
Well, if both parties agree, then they could, they could do it anytime.
Okay.
And that's it. Everything else the Planning Department suggests and recommends, we agree with, and we know they worked very hard.
Now, where does Ms. Lee live in relation to this layout? I mean, she's, she's one of the owners?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Where does Ms. Lee, she's a resident of one of these parcels?
Yeah, she lives...
Off to the right.
She lives here.
She lives on 25A?
Yeah.
That's our house there?
Yes.
We all actually purchased and...
Please come up, you have to come up and speak for the record. Give your name and address and speak for the record.
Yeah, the other party that we share the driveway with is this house right here, and her driveway goes onto 25A. Part of the reason is that the busy road, many times she wants to be able to come back out of the backside, or sometimes in the winter, we find it just safer to do that. So, the 2 of us find it mutually beneficial.
Sir, could you use the mic? Because on television, nobody hears this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, the Lees are...
Please give your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Don Woodworth. The agreement that we would like to have between the 2 parties is where the arrow shows their house, which is 74 Fort Solanga Road, and our house is in the back there. And we find it mutually beneficial for us to have the option and for them to have the option to go in either direction. And we have done this now for over 30 years that we've owned the parcels. We're good friends, we're good friends with their children, and, you know, we've talked about it to them, and they would appreciate if we could keep that right-of-way open for them as well as for us.
Now, the first parcel, which I guess is on the other roadway, if that were to be sold, and I guess you're going to build something there and sell the property. Now, what would the new owners, with the, you know, it's hard to say if they would have any objection to all these people going through.
Well, the Lot 1 will have a driveway on Woodfield, directly to Woodfield Avenue.
I see, okay, where the cul-de-sac would be. The short roadway.
No, Lot... This lot here will have a driveway directly to Woodfield.
I see, okay.
It will not be impacted, okay? Lot 2...
Again, please use the microphone.
You can take it with you.
Just, you can take it with you.
Okay, sorry.
Comes out of it, there you go.
Just pardon me, because I wasn't on the Board when this was initially done in 2012, and I appreciate you taking a moment to bring us up to date on this.
The half-acre, Lot 1, will, would have a driveway directly onto Woodfield Avenue. It would not be impacted. Lot 2, their driveway comes from the house and would use this portion of the private road.
Okay.
Okay? And obviously, Lot 3, which is where we're going to live, would obviously use that. So, it's no, it's the same amount of houses or people that use the driveway now would do that with the subdivision as it is.
Okay.
So, Lot 1 is not going to use that driveway?
No, no. Lot 1 will have a driveway somewhere directly over here.
Thank you. Planning, any comments? There's 2 issues, the right-of-way and the front and rear setback.
2 comments. One is the recommendation from council seems reasonable, and I think if it's okay with your counsel or the town attorney, it should work out fine in the long run. The second thing with respect to the rear yard, we had recommended the rear yard variance not being approved because on the map, it says the existing home to be, to remain. But tonight, Mr. Trumarko said the intention is to remove the existing home and replace it with a new one. And in that situation, what I would recommend perhaps is the Board grant the variance to 75 feet for a new home, but there has to be a note that grants it to whatever the existing setback, which I believe is 1.6 or something, 1 foot?
I think for the house existing right now?
Yeah.
I think it's 6 feet?
Oh, 6 feet. Or whatever it is for the existing house. So, there would, it'd be a little complicated, but the map would show a 75-foot rear yard setback for a future home, but the existing home is allowed to stay where it's at. And then if the, if someone wants to build a new home, the existing home would have to be removed or relocated.
Fine. Okay.
Now, you want to take this? I'm sorry?
I'm looking here, it says frame bond to remain. That's the one you're going to take down?
We're not taking down anything.
Right now.
Right now.
Nothing. Well, all we're trying...
That's all right. Gets a little crazy.
Yeah. All we were trying to, all I think Vince was trying to say was, in the event that this house was to be torn down and somebody else, because I'm not going to do it, builder wanted to build, it would give them more flexibility if it was 100-foot setback. That's all.
You mean a 75, actually.
Or 75, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're agreed on that? Okay.
So, in other words, like the map would, before filing, would have a 75-foot rear yard, and it would say that's for a future house. And then it would have a 6-foot rear yard for the existing house, whatever the, and then a note that the existing house would be removed if a new house were built.
Okay.
Or if someone wants to move the existing house and add to it.
We'll prepare the wording on the map and submit it to David.
All right.
And so that everybody is on the right page.
All right, so then I would see this coming back at the next meeting for...
Right.
...approval. Getting, while we're discussing this, the issue of the right-of-way or the easement, Mr. Flynn, any comments on the easement issue?
Oh, yes. Just before the, going back to the easement, there is another fee involved. I'm not sure what it is, but I assume it's in the hundreds of dollars.
500 a variance.
500. So, for that 75-foot variance, the resolution should require the payment of that fee.
Okay, that can be adjusted accordingly, then?
Right.
Okay.
With respect to the right-of-way, I think what Mr. Trumarko proposed seemed reasonable.
So, we can, I don't know, I get, I'll get...
I got no question, I think it was explained pretty well.
How does the Board feel on the easement?
If they're comfortable, uncomfortable.
Easement should remain.
All right. So, we can adjust that also in the next version?
Fine.
Okay. Is there any, any Board members have any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe it's something else, since it appears it's going to have to be adjourned to tweak it a little bit. The memo said that the Smithtown Central School District has acknowledged a subdivision. This is in Fort Solanga, which I don't believe is in the Smithtown Central School District.
No, it's Kings Park Central, number 5. Sorry about that.
So, is that just, in other words, has Kings Park recognized it, or?
I want to make sure. I'd like to confirm that.
I know, it would either be Kings Park or Northport, but not Smithtown.
This part is Kings Park. I will let you know.
Okay.
You're right, I didn't notice it.
Once in a while it happens.
Okay, so, can we resolve all these issues by the next meeting on November, by November 2nd? Is that agreeable to you?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn this to November 2nd?
In a manner...
In a matter of number 1147 map of bridal court, a move that we adjourn this matter until our next meeting on November 2nd, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The item stands adjourned until November 2nd. Next item on the agenda is a waiver request for Flynn Platt Kings Park to waive conditions P and Q. At the last meeting, this item came before the board for a vote and received two votes in the affirmative, two votes in the negative. Now with all five members present this evening. First, I will have the planning department read their report. Just give us a second till. The room clears? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. The applicant is requesting the wave conditions P and Q, the final conditional approval for number 1101 map of Flynn Platt. This waiver request was first heard at the planning board meeting on September 21st, 2016. The matter was adjourned at the applicant's request in order for the board to inspect the site. The applicant explained that the rear yard is very small, that the retaining wall adequately serves as a boundary line, that he has no intention of encroaching on the state parkland, and that the vast majority of the park boundary is not fenced. The planning department inspected the site and found the following. One, the patio and fire pit behind the dwelling encroach onto the state parkland. Two, the property owner appears to be using the town property to the north as his sideyard. The property is landscaped and there is a shed on it. Three, 10 of 11 homes on Black Gum Tree Lane that back up to the park have fences on the rear property line. Six of these lots are fenced off because they join the cemetery. And four, only one of the seven houses on Heather Drive that back up to the park have a fence along the property line. At the October 5th, 2016 meeting, the planning board made a motion to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby denies the request of Lawrence G. Flynn to waive final conditions P and Q within the subdivision known as number 1101 map of Flynn Platt for the following reasons. Number one, the current property owner has encroached onto both the state parkland and town-owned land. Two, the fence and plantings will prevent future encroachment and clearing onto the state parkland and town-owned property. The resolution failed by a vote of two yes, two no. One member was absent. Therefore, the matter remains on the board's agenda. The planning department recommends that the board adopt the resolution recommended at the last meeting, see above, for the reasons presented in this memorandum and memorandum dated September 30th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. As you know, the last time we were here, it was a 2-2 vote. And maybe at that meeting, I should have brought in the owner of the improved parcel, Mr. Filipkowski, who's here tonight, and I'd like you to give me the opportunity to have him speak, because he lives there and he knows what happens every day. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Please proceed. Please write your name and address for the record.
Greg Filipkowski, 35, Heather Drive, Kings Park.
Spell that too.
G R E G, and last name is F I L I P as in Peter, K O W S K I. Well, um, not a, I just want to start, I'm not a great public speaker, but, um, when I bought this property and my dream was to build a house for my family and where I, before I lived before, there was white fences everywhere. I didn't like that, and that's why I bought this property. So then I started building the dream home, and what happened all of a sudden, on the right-hand side, it came to be, I have a 16-foot wall, which is. Then the neighbor put up a six-foot white fence above it. It became a 20-foot wall, 15 away, 15 feet away from my house. Then, if I go in the back of it, right here, I have a, another wall going across the property, which is four foot tall, 15 away. So that's my backyard. My backyard is 15 feet. And so all of a sudden, things weren't looking so great. Then when we look to the left, while I was building, I see a whole bunch of kids going through here, and this was a very, this was in a bad shape. So the property got cleaned up, I put the grass down, I made the trees. And while I was cleaning this whole thing, I found that through this path, the people that were going to the woods, I found, and I have pictures of that, I found needles. I mean, just, just really bad stuff. And the people that would park here and go in the woods, I confronted them, and I said, "Look," after I cleaned up the property, I said, "This is private property. You can't come through here." So that stopped.
You mean, you're referring to the town property?
Yes.
Okay.
And so all of the sudden, the neighborhood, nobody was parking here. The lady across the street, everybody was really happy about it because all that gone away. Now, I believe if the fence goes back there, all of the sudden, I think that's all going to come back because they're going to think, "It's not my property." And I'm not claiming that it's my property, I'm just trying to keep, really, the, I don't know how you can call, but the people that got up there, you know, they make fires, they do drugs, they, they spray paint the, the water tower that's back there. You know, it was insane when I was building the house, and that's not happening anymore. And, I mean, I don't know what else I could say. I, I did as much as I could. I planted as many trees everywhere. There's about, I would say, 70 trees that I planted to make it look very natural to the scape. And I guess I tried my best to make it look nice. And, I mean, I don't know, like my landscaper right now, when he cuts the grass, which is, you know, I have 19 feet here, he just goes and takes the lawnmower, which is a ride-on, and he just cuts it here and cuts it here and cleans the, the whole plot over here and then rides out. Now, if we're going to have a fence here, I, I don't know who's going to come here and clean all that up and, and that whole nonsense with the, I, I have no idea what's going to happen. It's just going to be a disaster. It's going to come back to step one.
Okay, you had mentioned, you know, there were people using their property or trespassing people. Did you ever contact the town to say that there's a problem here? There's people on town property where there's recharge bases, there's three circles there of things that are stuck in the ground? Did you ever contact the town, and what was their response?
Um, well, I contacted the town, and most of the time, it was police, actually. And I have a neighbor across the street, and she's very expressive and calls the cops every minute. And nothing, it was, nothing was done.
Okay, and now I visited this property several weeks ago.
Yes.
And I gained entrance to the town property by going through the trees, I guess, that you planted along?
Yes, yes.
The roadway?
Yes.
There's a shed on the town property. Is that your shed?
Yes.
You built a shed on town property? How did they give you a permit to give, build a shed on their property?
No. What it, what it is, it's a, it's a plastic, um, I guess it's, is it called a shed if it's?
Yes, it's a shed. I was there, I saw it's, it's rather high.
Sure.
It's, you know, it's about eight feet high. I can imagine eight by 10 feet in size.
It's six by eight. I, I mean, I've got, I bought it at Costco. It's one of those things that I can pick it up and put it anywhere in about, you know, an hour.
He's not a permanent structure.
No, no. It's, and it's, when I went to the town, when I actually called my surveyor and I asked, I said, "You know, I got this shed that's six by eight." I, I don't know, it's the Costco plastic thing that I just put it together. It's not wooden or anything. He goes, "Well, you know, the town doesn't, it's like one of those little plastic things that you don't need a permit for."
You don't?
Et cetera.
I think it's under 50 square feet, so you don't think you would need a permit probably for that reason.
Yeah. And I don't have to put it on the survey or anything. I said, "Oh, okay." So he goes, "Well, if there's any issues, what is that, does it weigh like 150 pounds? You can just move it?" I said, "Yeah."
It's on some kind of base. It looks like it's on a wooden platform of some type that's on cement blocks, as I recall?
Well, the, my, my father, he's, he's an old-school European, okay? And if he's, I put up the shed, and he goes, "No, this is, this doesn't, it's not the way you do it." So yes, he built a little platform underneath it, so like more of my kids put the bikes there so it doesn't drop, I guess. But it's not a permanent structure. I can move it at any point in time.
That's good. Okay, getting.
Have you ever received any communication? Is that on the, is it on the town property or the state property?
It's on, well.
I believe it's on the town property.
Well.
State property's in the back.
So have you ever received any communication from the town or anybody else asking you to move it?
No.
Okay.
This is the first time.
How long has it been there?
I put it up in the beginning of the summer.
Just recently?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have bikes storage, so I stored my kids' bikins.
Okay, now the fire pit, that's on the state property, I believe, right?
Uh.
Which is on the back property, along the back property line, it crosses over the property line onto the state property.
Yeah, but I, I mean, it, that's again, it's.
That's movable as well?
Yes.
Uh huh, okay. Now, there's, in the woods, there's a zip line, you know, cable strung between trees with something that people can hang on and go from one tree to the other, I guess, over about a 75 to 100 feet. Is that yours, or did somebody else put that there?
No, that's my son's zip line.
Okay.
And that's.
And the lighting that you have on the state property, the wires that, some of them are partially exposed. It's, is that yours as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what it is, that's 12 volts. It's, it's equivalent to a 9-volt battery. So just, just so it, when we moved in, my wife was kind of scared of the forest when it gets dark. So I said, "This is what I'm going to do. I'm going to run these low voltage wires, and I'm going to put a couple lights to light up the trees." So when I'm not home, because what I do is I shoot commercials for a living, and I travel all over the world. I'm going to light this forest up with these low voltage lights, so you're not scared.
The state property?
Yeah.
Okay.
The trees.
All right, any other questions? Any members of the board have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Not of him. Sorry, not of you, sir, sorry. Of the planning department. I have a procedural question. Is what mechanism was there used to get this onto our agenda from the last meeting to this meeting? Because my recollection, could be wrong, that there was no application to adjourn it from last meeting to this meeting, or application to adjourn it from last meeting to any other meeting. So that if there was no adjournment, this would have, to me, would have to be posted again before we could hear it. Is, I mean, is that correct? Incorrect?
My impression was that there is no decision made, so is it not closed?
Well, there was a vote on it. The vote was 2 to 2, but there was no application to adjourn it to this day, that I remember, which I think that would have to have been done, an adjournment to a date certain, to avoid the law and giving the public notice. Now, this may not be something that's going to generate a lot of public interest and comment, but I, I think that unless there was, unless council wants to tell me something different, unless there was an application to adjourn it from that last meeting to a date certain, I don't know that it's procedurally properly before us without having been reposted. I don't think we could just put it on.
I think it was adjourned. I don't have the.
I don't, I don't, I didn't, I didn't look at the minutes.
It's my impression, it was, but.
My recollection was.
If you would like to have them posted and pay the fees?
Well, no, I don't, I don't want to do that, but I'm just saying is that I don't believe that it's procedurally properly before us, because I could be wrong, but I don't remember it being adjourned. I remember the possibility of it coming on again, being given to council, and council saying, "I'll think about it." And I think that's how it ended. I don't remember whether there was an adjournment after that. I don't have the minutes in front of me, but that's what I don't, I don't remember how it was adjourned. Or that, that it was adjourned to a date certain or to any other date.
I think it was adjourned to this date. I don't know if Matt remembers.
I don't, I don't believe it was.
It was my impression.
You know, I, I don't see, I don't see, you know, it being a real issue.
Now, if we want, we could have them repost it and re-advertise it. As it stands right now, the applicant sought a waiver for the fence and tree plantings. And should the board take no action, there is no waiver, and he must comply with the original subdivision requirements, which state you put a fence and you do the plantings. So that would be fine by me.
Or you can vote with the fifth member here, again. And, you know, given the fact that Mr. Filipkowski has testified, I really should have had him here the first time. That's my, my error. But one of the things that I think this board should consider is the fact that he's maintaining the town property. And if he put the fence up, and if the board makes us do that, which obviously we already agreed to do, and we're asking for a waiver, it's going to be worse. Because now he can't get behind that fence to clean it up. The kids or the people, whoever go there, are going to be in a situation where it's just going to become a terrible situation for.
I, I could see that, I could see that situation. But if we were to allow this, you would allow, you would send a signal to every homeowner in the town of Smithtown that if you have a piece of property next to you that's not occupied, you can improve it and do whatever you want, regardless of who owns it, whether you own it or not. And I, I can't see, certainly you wouldn't want that if somebody did that to a property you owned. And not only did he encroach on town property, but he took the state of New York in as well. And this is a very unusual situation. I've never seen like a double encroachment like this before.
Well.
Or whatever his intentions were, it was wrong.
The other thing that I'd like to point out is, we would be, you know, we, we would have to remove the, the zip line, remove the shed, and, I guess, take the lights out and put them on our property and shine them on, in the woods. So we wouldn't be, you know, encroaching on, on the town property then. It just would be that there wouldn't be a fence. So, you know, that's an alternative, and I talked to Mr. Filipkowski, and he said that would be fine. So, you know, I guess the board's got to weigh everything and think about the fact that it probably is a real problem there with people coming in the back and, you know, doing that. And I guess you could say, "Well, you shouldn't have bought next to the town property." Everybody thinks it's a great thing because you got land forever, but sometimes it becomes a problem.
I mean, we've had, I've heard people encroaching on scenic easements and, and everything else. We've had cases like that, similar cases before us. And the law is the law, I mean, as you know.
I don't think we have the right to give away the town property.
No, we don't.
Exactly.
Are we giving it away, or?
Or letting somebody use it?
Well, actually, if the applicant is stating that he's going to remove all of that, then he's, then we didn't give it away, I guess.
Right, then he's not using their property.
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be saying. If there's a violation, that's up to somebody else to enforce that. That's not our job, I don't believe.
I think you wouldn't be saying you're allowing them, or Filipkowski or whoever else is there to use the property, you're just saying, "We're allowing a fence waiver." That's all, you're not giving them.
I think it's not up to us whether he uses it or not. If there's a violation, then there's code enforcement that can go and enforce it. We, we don't have the power to do that.
All right, so we have before us the resolution. Is there any other further discussion? Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter?
I just have one other question, so Matt, can you say that it was adjourned, or you agree that it was not adjourned?
I don't think it was adjourned to a date.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, so then, if you, if you'd like to seek the waiver, then you're going to have to reapply.
And Matt said, "I don't think there was, it was adjourned," right?
I don't remember.
But if we do not act on this tonight, and we do not adjourn it to a date certain, then you're going to have to, but we don't, there's some discussion as to whether or not this was adjourned, and a matter can be put before us for a vote.
We'll reapply.
Thank you.
Okay. So, at this point, again, there is no waiver, so the original requirements of the subdivision apply in this case.
I would just say, obviously, again, it's not up to us, but if you are going to reapply, maybe if some of these things that are encroaching or whatever are not there anymore, maybe it might be looked at differently, I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Any other business before the board this evening?
Can I have one more question?
Yes.
If you guys are going to put up that fence there, who's going to maintain that property?
It would be up to the town, the owners, and the state of New York to maintain their property as well.
They have the same obligation that they have to do it now?
Yes.
And they don't do it?
Well, you should start a paper trail, call whatever you do, write down what you do, who you speak to at the town or the state, and get yourself a paper trail. I think it'll help you out a lot.
I mean, right, as far as I understand it, right now, if that's town property and state property, the town and the state has the obligation to maintain their own property, whether there's a fence there or not a fence there.
Okay.
I mean, there are three drainage pools that are buried in the property there where the storm sewers go. So, I would imagine if there was an issue, they had to get in there to replace the sewers or repair the drainage system, they would do so, your shed notwithstanding.
But like, leaves and all that, and trees, and the grass growing high, they're going to come in and cut that, right, regularly?
That would be up to, you know, the town to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business before the board? There being none, I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, we stand adjourned.